We don't have Home Mech or Life Skills classes. They're not taught those things anymore, so sad to say that our generation now will, in the future, probably won't ever learn how to bake a cake or go buy a recipe or something. My kids were lucky enough, they had Home Mech here, so my son, he still knows how to make biscuits and they still know how to make little things like that, that they learned from Ann Rice. And, uh, just healthy lifestyle, cooking, animal care, planting gardens and stuff like that. We, we need those life skills classes. And I personally, uh, talked to Governor, um, Lujan when she was running. And right after she got elected too, that our schools need those, uh, classes back. And I hope somehow they'll, you know, uh, think to put them back in our school system. I think it's very important, especially for Native Americans. And I just want to say thank you, teachers, if there's any teachers here. Thank you for teaching our children. Um, thank you, school board and all for all that you do. Um, as, uh, on behalf of Crown Point here, I just want to say you all do a lot of good work. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Yeah, Rita. For those comments, uh, Joan, can we have, uh, roll call, please?
Charles Long.
Here.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manuelito.
Present.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Joan, we do have a quorum, so let's proceed with our business. Uh, Chris, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I would just to the flag, my United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I stand in the middle of the flag, slaying the Mexico, state of the world, working friendship, among the united nations.
Thank you, Chris. Board members, yeah. Thank you. I want to thank everybody that's here. Uh, if you haven't had breakfast, we do have some snacks back there. And like I said before, we're, we're having a gourmet meal tonight, pigs on a blanket. Anyway, uh, I want to thank Rita too for, uh, making those comments. I wanted to, uh, at least show, uh, some respect to, uh, chapter officials. We also have, uh, we also have Mr. Jay DeGroot here. He's a chapter president from Mariana Lake. And, uh, I was talking with him, uh, before the meeting started and he was telling me night, fifty-one years ago, uh, then chairman Raymond Nikai, uh, passed legislation to adopt the Navajo Nation flag. Uh, that's one, one thing I wanted to share with you. We're talking about a lot of things. Uh, anyway, uh, and then Rita was talking about a building that burned down over there. That day, we both showed up over there and, uh, we were part of the, uh, fire crew trying to put out that building, put out that fire on the building, so. Uh, board members, let's go down to item number two, approval of agenda, the agenda.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda as it's presented here.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made by, uh, Chris Mortensen to approve the agenda, second by Priscilla Manuelito, roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we go to recognitions now.
Hi.
President Long, members of the board, we have Giovanna Hanks here, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, and she will conduct this part of the meeting. We have several recipients here today, and, uh, we're gonna have the board stand up in the front, if you would, and then as our students come through, uh, if they would receive their award from me and then shake the board members' hands, and at the end, we'd like to get everybody back up for a photo.
Board members, we go to item three, approval of the meeting minutes from the March eighteenth, uh, Board of Education meeting. Uh, we all had time to review the meeting minutes, whether it's the pleasure of the board.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, motions have been made, second, Kevin. Okay, motions been made by Michael Shaw, and second by, uh, Kevin Mitchell to approve the meeting minutes of March eighteen, twenty nineteen, roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. No, yes. For some reason, my microphone's going off and on. Is it on? Okay, uh, let's go down to item number four, approval of consent agenda items, board members.
Um, I'd like to go ahead and motion for approval.
I'll say mine.
Okay, motions been made by Priscilla Manuelito and second by Chris Mortensen to approve the consent agenda items, roll call, Joan.
Yes.
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 Yes. Oh, that's it, oh, yeah, there it goes. Uh, let's go down to item number five, study circle, public comment. We do have one, uh, public comment, Frida Jo.
Test us.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? No?
See if it's on.
I, I have a call, so you'll have to excuse me if my voice has a tendency to go in and out. Um, my name is Frida Jo, and, um, I'm, uh, I'm not sure what I am right now. I'm a grandparent of, um, granddaughter who, who goes to school here at the high school. I actually have, um, had two granddaughters who were going to school here. One graduated a couple of years ago. Um, and I myself am a graduate of Crown Point High School, uh, when the high school was down at the, the now mid-school. And, um, I, I'm really grateful to those board members who, um, made it possible to have a board meeting here in Crown Point. I was really disappointed to learn that, um, at the beginning of the year, that, um, they were only going to have, I guess, limit their, uh, board meetings to the rural schools to one location. And, um, I really feel like a lot of times, we have a tendency to, um, forget about our schools out here in the rural areas. And, um, to me, um, every school is important in the school district, just like every student is important in our school system. And, um, I was thinking back about, you know, Rita mentioned some programs that we had here, and the reason I mention this is because I work for Naval Technical University and I deliver a dual credit program to the high school students. And it's really, um, discouraging to me because I get to see some of the programs that are in all the high schools. And I know that, you know, for instance, through high school and, um, Rayma High School have similar enrollments as Crown Point High School. And when I have been asked, how come Crown Point High doesn't have like a wood shop or auto tech, um, and, um, I forgot what the other one was. Anyway, um, I've often been told, well, it's because we have low enrollment here, and our enrollment can't support or doesn't support programs like that. And so I wonder, how are we gonna track, attract students to our school if we don't have programs to bring them here? I don't think that our enrollment, when I was in high school, has changed much to what we have now. Uh, recently, our band teacher, back in the seventies when I was here, Mr. Owen Bennett, he recently passed away at ninety-four. And, you know, to, to me, he was, um, a real example of someone who went out to, to help students, to bring, enlighten them on things like music. We had choir here, we had band, and, um, I remember, you know, I was in both, both, um, classes, and we would go down to downtown Crown Point and, during Christmas, and have a Christmas tree lighting. And, you know, it was, and even though our school struggled, we still had those kind of programs. We had, um, FFA, we had wood shop, Home Mech, Future Teachers of America, and office education. These are all programs that'll help our children, you know, for their future. Um, having, I, I had three children that, uh, one or two graduated from here and one graduated from a, a private school. And so I've had a lot of years of experience as a parent here. And, um, with, I think my, my son had Home Mech here, I think they still had Home Mech, and some, a band program. Um, but when my granddaughters got here, there was nothing. I think basically you just have a welding class. And so I feel like we need to do more, we, we can do better to help our, our students out here. Um, and Rita mentioned, you know, uh, the importance of learning how to, all the little things that go into learning how to cook. You know, I find myself teaching my granddaughters how to double a recipe, how to use measuring instruments, you know? Those are all things that they learn in the classroom in chemistry or physics or whatever. But to really apply those skills in, 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 at home or at work, helps them to understand the importance of learning those, those things, of learning why it's important for them to, to take the time to excel in those classes and how important they are in their life. And I feel like, you know, um, I was in, I think I was in mid-school or junior high, I remember, when they had the, when we didn't have a high school here. And now we have a high school, we have a mid-school, and, um, I just feel like our schools should be getting better, not going backwards, you know? And, um, Ashley is gonna be our last granddaughter that'll go to school here, and so you probably won't see me around, but, um, I'll be down at NTU. But actually, you know, I really feel like, um, like I said, I feel like our schools should be getting better, not going backwards. And, um, again, I want to thank all of you for coming out, and I hope that you make, you know, more visits out to our rural schools because they're just as important, and they need to feel like they are important to the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frida. Uh, Christiana Jones?
Good evening, everybody. My name is, uh, Christiana Desiderio Jones, and I am a student success advisor at Thoreau High School. So it's, it's a great honor to be here, and, um, we just want to thank you for coming out here to Crown Point. Um, it's close to Thoreau, and I know it's a convenience for some of the parents, so thank you for that, and I hope to see that this continues, um, because we're way out here and, um, some people, it's closer to come and carpool out in the rural areas. Um, so I just wanted to speak on the item of the, um, the agenda item that was recently approved. Um, I have some seniors here with me, um, who are all from Thoreau High School, great group of kids who, um, I'm definitely gonna miss, and, um, they do so much for our school. A lot of them are in student council, honor society, um, peer helpers, and they do so much for our school, not only our school, but we go out and we do a lot of, uh, community service. We work with Thoreau Community Center, um, peer, uh, Indian Health Services here from Crown Point. And so this trip, um, for them, um, as their senior trip, is, is not only educational for them, but also, um, rewarding. So I just wanted to say thank you, um, and I do appreciate, um, you taking the time to listen to us, but I, I wanted to introduce some of the seniors that came out. Um, we also have our principal here supporting us, um, so he, great principal, always in support of everything that we, we do. So Dallin Quaid, Camillee, come on up. Can you introduce yourself?
Hello, um, my name is, um, Quaid Bennett, and I am Vice President of the senior class, and I help, um, raise the, or help fundraise for this trip to Texas. And, well, this trip will really, uh, well, I don't know, I've, I'll probably be sad after this trip because we've had to graduate and, hm, and leave all our friends behind, but, um, I think this is a really, um, a really unique trip to go on to because we would be touring a campus and maybe one of us seniors will go there for college. Thank you.
Um, good evening, my name is Raylene Charlie. Um, I'm a senior at Thoreau High School, and the senior trip we'll be taking, I think it'll really benef- benefit us as seniors to see what else could be offered in the real world, and how there's, and how we can go farther in education as well. And also to celebrate our four years of high school, and we did it. So this last trip would really be fun for all of us, and the college tour would be a good experience too. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dallin Plummer, I am, uh, class president of, of Thoreau High School, and I am here today to abide the board's approval for the senior trip. My peers and I are planning to depart, um, on Thursday, April eleventh to Arlington, Texas, and return home on Sunday, April fourteenth. We have chosen an outside state because the majority of the class had, has not the opportunity to travel far distance, but going on this trip will, it, it will be expand, expand our knowledge, and we will experience new things that we haven't seen before. We will find, we will see how different Texas is compared to New Mexico as well, because we want to travel, we wanted to travel far because we have worked together to raise money that we needed, and we accomplished our goal, which is eight thousand. And finally, we wanted to celebrate, and by going to Arlington, Texas, and celebrate like one more last time for our senior trip with our fellow seniors, and, yeah, thank you.
They're kinda nervous, but really they're excited to go, so that's all I hear, and I can't hear the end of it, but they are really excited to go, and we are very, very thankful for all your support. Thank you.
Gosh, thank you. Thank you so much for that. We're proud of our kids, you know, school board members. Yeah. Under study circle, let's go to B, uh, reports.
President Long, members of the board, audience, um, I'm gonna put two principals on deck really quick, they don't know they're gonna talk about something, but I'm gonna let them know ahead of, ahead of time before I call them up. Uh, Mr. Senna, the principal in Thoreau, Mr. Mata, the principal at Crown Point High School, I want you to put, I know, but I'm gonna put those two are actually gonna speak. There are several principals here, we appreciate you coming. I'm gonna put those two on deck to, to talk about career pathways that are happening in their, that through high school and also at Crown Point High School. Um, members of the board, uh, we also have several principals here, actually, if all the principals would stand up, I can't quite see all of them. Yeah, Mr. Mata, they're hiding, I don't know, in the back row here. Uh, Katie Gilbert, Crown Point Mid, Mr. Senna, you'll hear from him in a minute, Mr. Mata and Ms. Arsenalt, Crown Point Elementary. Uh, so as you know, board members, we have developed a strategic plan, which you have approved, and we are rolling that strategic plan out to, uh, staff, students, community, parents, et cetera, and students. And, uh, we have, we have been meeting with administration recently to discuss the strategic plan. We'll also be meeting tomorrow to wrap up those administrators who were out of town during our first few sessions. Uh, we did produce some documents that will go out to staff and students and, and parents, I'm gonna pass those down so you can kind of see some of the information that's being disseminated. We'll also have the full strategic plan, as you know, it's a thicker document on the website, uh, so that people will have an opportunity to digest it if they want to dig into it a little bit more. Um, the reason why I talk about that is because, as you know, career pathways is a significant piece of that strategic plan, uh, with a emphasis on making sure that students, as they work through the system of education in our county, K through twelve, that they are exploring careers, that they're learning career skills, and actually pursuing what we call career pathways before they graduate from high school, so that they have a better opportunity to be employed and be ready for college, and those, uh, goals that they want to reach as a, as an adult after they leave. And so I just wanted to briefly touch on the couple of schools that I mentioned today, uh, and let them tell you a little about just a few, some of the pathways that they're doing, or all the pathways that they're gonna be doing next year. Uh, those will expand the year after, and then at either the next board meeting, depending on how big the schedule is, or the next one after that, we will have all of the principals from the high school, and maybe a few mid-schools, maybe a few elementary schools come in and talk about what they're doing at different levels. So you can see how this is not just a high school thing, this starts at elementary level and mid-school level also. Uh, so if Mr. Senna, if you would just talk about, really quickly, about the career pathways that you're, are, are implementing next year, and then Mr. Mata, if you would follow up, follow, follow Mr. Senna.
I don't think I need my microphone. So, um, okay, thanks. Oh, for TV, oh, then I better have the microphone. Um, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Mr. Hyatt, Assistant Superintendents, everyone, thank you for having me out here. Um, I'm, I'm actually excited about our new endeavor that we're doing with career pathways. At Thoreau High School, we've been attempting to try to create pathways with the systems that have been in place, and, and with this new push, it's really given us a, a, a good structure and guidance in which we can really push forward with the support of the board and, and, and Mr. Hyatt and Superintendent Hyatt. So at Thoreau High School, we have been working closely with NMSU grants with some of our students in our dual credit online program, uh, which, you know, isn't for every student, but we do have some students who are self-driven, who can do these online programs, computer-based, uh, you know, without that one-to-one interaction, just the internet interaction, which is, you know, can, can be difficult for a lot of students, but we've had, put that in place where we do have some students working for certified nursing assistants, and so they are doing a lot of the work while, for dual credit while in high school, and then once they graduate would be able to go to NMSU for one semester and be able to get their certificate and be in the workforce immediately. And so now we have that career pathway in place, that's one of our health career pathways. Uh, we will be developing some other health pathways. We will be offering our freshmen and sophomores the basic career option classes that we'll be providing at the high school, and then as they pass those classes, one CNA pathway is what we do have right now, but in the future, we will be able to develop maybe a couple of more pathways that we can branch out of that. Uh, the other area that we're also working in is transportation, so we do have an auto bay there, and so we will, getting our instructor to work with NTU so that we can also offer some dual credit, which will be done on campus with our instructor there, so that we can, uh, um, offer that career auto technician pathway for our students. So once again, we'll be giving them those classes that they can take, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year, and then lead them into a, a certificate or further program here at NTU. Um, we're also gonna be working with our business, we don't quite have this one mapped out, but we're in the process of getting that one ready, and we will have it in place for next year, so we can work with our administrative assistant pathway as well, and, and the business pathway. Um, we also have another pathway in which we're using our woodworking for carpentry, so we can once again get our students in those four years of courses as freshmen right away, and push them through into our carpentry area, and then once again, they would be able to branch out here, possibly at NTU, or take some CCTE courses at UNM Gallup, and that's also in the auto pathway, we have that available for them to go, maybe if they want to go into bodywork or paint, or, or anything in that area in the auto, in which they can go to UNM Gallup CCTE their senior year. Uh, we do have quite a bit of students Uh, we do have quite a bit of students going there currently, we, I think this year we had, uh, seventeen students that were doing our CCTE program at UNM Gallup, so that's been great. So now with the career pathways, we may be able to increase our seniors' attendance at, uh, UNM Gallup for that CCTE. So, again, we're really excited in, in the areas that we're pushing. I mean, as always, we do have pathways in which, you know, our college and career readiness pathways, uh, that can also lead our kids to college, working for an associate's degree and we have some courses, again, that we've been putting into place there at Through to try to get our dual credit programs up and running and push our kids forward so that, you know, they're after a career once we're done at the high school level, so, uh, we're really excited. Thank you.
Uh, here at Crown Point, uh, like Mr. Senna said, it, it's been an exciting time for all of us principals, uh, getting to, yeah, interact with each other and work on, on different career pathways that we're, uh, going to be implementing at our school, uh, next year at Crown Point. Um, and before I say anything, I wanna thank Mrs. Strade, who's our, our counselor, she's done a lot of the legwork for us, uh, with looking at different pathways, talking to colleges, uh, and, and those certain things also. But at Crown Point, uh, here on campus, we're gonna be offering a welding pathway would be, uh, one thing, uh, that we're gonna offer, uh, here on campus, uh, so they can work on that, uh, with some dual credit. We're also working with, uh, NMSU Grants, uh, or San Juan, we haven't made a final decision on that yet with our, uh, nursing pathway. Um, we are, uh, being able, hopefully with San, with San Juan, to get a little bit, uh, better of a deal with the, uh, classes and, and what they offer. Uh, we also have talked with the business department at NTU and with the engineering department and they are helping with us, offering us classes, uh, actually gonna maybe bring some teachers over here, so we are gonna be offering those two pathways, uh, next year also, so we'll start our business with NTU, uh, that program and also our, uh, engineering, which he'll, uh, actually, we're gonna start, uh, with some summer, uh, enrichment classes that he's gonna be offering and, and, and offering us in the summer. So, that's where we're starting, uh, and we're hoping to branch out and do a lot more things, um, and adding bits and pieces every year from there, but this is the, the start that we're gonna have and hopefully it, it jumpstarts and interests our kids and, and gets them motivated, uh, to not just pursue the college pathway, but also pursue, uh, a professional and, and, and different pathway from there, so.
Um, one more time, did you say welding, nursing and engineering?
Welding, yeah, welding, nursing, engineering, business.
Can I have two present, the two presenters up there, please? There's some questions and comments from Board Members.
Thank you very much for, um, tha- that information. I just wanted to get clarification from Crown Point, um, you said welding, nursing and engineering?
Yes, welding, nursing, engineering, uh, and business.
Business, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add, we forgot that we are doing a teach pathway, a teacher pathway as well at Through High School, so, something desperately needed, so.
Yeah, several of our schools are starting that pathway and these will expand over the years. Um, we're kinda doing little incubators here and there, uh, to see what works. In the future, I also foresee that we will have schools working together. It's not that far for Crown Point to come to their auto bay over in Through or for, uh, Through students to go over and work in welding in Crown Point, for example, so. Uh, we're looking at all options. In addition to that, as was mentioned, that's what happens when you put them on the spot.
I forgot, we're also doing a fine arts pathway, where the students will be working in, with our art teacher.
Thank you. It's closed, no more, no more pathways. Um, as was mentioned also, we are, one of the things that we're doing for Crown Point that we have not done in the past, uh, at least in recent memory, for me at least, is we're opening up transportation from Crown Point into Gallup for CCTE courses to even expand more, uh, and so that's something that hasn't been done for many years, uh, and we're also opening that up for Navajo also and Reima. So all of our communities, only reason we don't do Say Guys because it's just too far of a commute for students to get credits and finish the program. McKinley Academy was mentioned by some of the principals. Uh, we had projected, I think the last time I talked to you, we're looking at about two eighty or two hundred and ninety students. Uh, we are already close to three hundred and thirty students for McKinley Academy for next year. That means we have three hundred and thirty more students earning dual credit, working towards their associate's degree in our county after one year of implementation. Uh, it's a huge success story and we encourage and will be giving out information to Crown Point students, if they wish to attend NTU, they may, and if they wish to attend UNM, they may also now that transportation's being provided, so. Um, in addition, a few more items, uh, as you know, we have been working hard to get Impact Aid dollars back to our district to help with capital needs. As you know, uh, legislation that we were fighting for did not pass, uh, until later in the session when House, was this House bill or no, Senate bill, Senate Bill two eighty, uh, did pass where it gives a one-time allotment of thirty-four million dollars to Impact Aid school districts. Uh, so it's a, a, a good win, uh, the fight's not over, uh, but that's one small victory that we, that will help our district and many districts like ours in making sure they're meeting the needs of their students through teachages, uh, making sure staff have teachages that are appropriate for them to live in so they can work in our tribal areas. And also fourteen million will also, um, I'm sorry, twenty-four million, uh, for other capital needs. Uh, we expect that our district will receive around thirteen to fifteen million dollars given the size of our, our student body. Uh, we expect to use these things, these monies on such things as fixing HVAC systems, really focusing on heating and cooling, uh, safety, we have some parking lot issues that need to be remedied and, uh, I know even Crown Point, I know we have some heating issues in this building, we also have some heating and cooling issues down at the middle school in the older part of the building, so. In addition to that, I just want you to recognize, uh, whenever we go to a community, I want you to know what we have done recently for this community as far as for capital projects. Uh, Ms. Capitan mentioned the teachages are being torn down and being, debris was removed, which is a, a very positive thing for this community. Um, also, if you noticed, the outside of the school building was repainted, uh, which hasn't ever been done since it was, since it was built. And also, you notice that there's new furniture, uh, new tables, new desks in classrooms and so we have been investing in our schools that are not going to be rebuilt in the near future or remodeled so that students have an opportunity to not be in a desk that has cracked chairs, uh, not to be eating lunch, uh, make sure they have an opportunity to eat lunch in a, in, in good furniture and also have a building that looks presentable. And we'll be doing even more work into the future on our rural schools and some of our city schools that are going to be replaced in the future. Any questions?
Do you have any, um, do you have any improvements at the mid-school and elementary?
Mid-school, one of the things, for Crown Point, is that what you mean, miss my angle? Yes. So for mid, the mid-school, we are looking at some of these funds from Impact Aid, Senate Bill two eighty, to help with the HVAC. Um, I, I personally feel that the middle school needs to be repainted, uh, because they built it in phases and then they remodeled part of it and built new, it just looks, it just needs to be unified for that building. Uh, for the elementary, it's brand new, but when I was walk, when I was driving by today, I saw some of the landscaping that could be redone, that's an area. We wanna go by each school and look at what are the needs of each school in the whole entire county to try to look where we can help to make things look better and feel better and, uh, for our students and staff.
Any other questions? Attention, nada, huh? Just wanna make a comment on Impact Aid, yes, we got some money and I was telling Superintendent, I said, that's hush monies that was given to us, so, keep that in mind and that's why there's still, you know, just, I guess, Mike says, let's hush about that thing for now. But I'm sure we're still gonna, uh, be fighting, uh, there's several options available for the district to pursue. Uh, we go down to Board Reports, Board Members.
Hi, yeah, thank you, um, Board Members. Uh, I just wanted to continue on with what, uh, about the Impact Aid. Um, Mr. Mitchell and I were very fortunate, um, that we attended the National School Board Association and from our, um, connection from our attorney, uh, he made some, uh, connections for us to meet with some very important people with the New Mexico School Board Association and also with the, um, American Indian and Alaskan Native, um, um, committees, our council, they were, they were called, um, they were, they just received that, um, council, uh, title and before and now they're voting members of the National School Board Association. So that was, that was wonderful for our indigenous, um, relatives and ourselves that now we have a, we're voting members into, um, issues that are very important to our children. We met with them and it was kinda hard to kinda get the meeting set, but we did meet with them and we told them of what was happening with our Impact Aid and that we needed to start uniting and continuing to fight this for our children due to the amount of money that they're taking from us. We learned that, um, Alaska, uh, their ninety percent, um, of their money is being taken from them, uh, so, you know, we were kinda like, oh my gosh, I don't know what we would do, and ninety percent, we, you know, I, seventy-five percent is hard on us and I couldn't imagine ninety percent of, um, their monies are being taken. So, we talked with them and they're willing to support us on that. The, um, American Indian, Alaskan Native, um, have another subgroup that they're a part of, the Alaskan Federation Nation, um, and they want to do a lot of resolutions to start talking with their legislators. And one of the things that we've been discussing as a Board and, uh, going with Mr. Hyatt to Santa Fe, um, a few times, you know, we, we, we need to start changing this at the federal level and so that way it would be a lot easier for us. And that's one, one of the avenues that, um, Mr. Mitchell and I took on behalf of our, our students here in, in McKinley County to open up those doors and, um, start having that discussion with, um, other indigenous tribes, other school districts that are having the same iss- issues as we are. Uh, after we met with them, um, um, Zuni, Zuni was there too, our, our colleagues from, um, uh, southern, uh, south of us, they were at the conference too. Um, CCSD was there from Central Consolidated, uh, we invited them, but we kept moving the meeting place around, so they, they really couldn't find us when the meeting started. Um, but we did meet with them, um, a, a separate time and we kind of updated them on what our initiatives are. Um, Zuni did meet with, um, Kansas and, uh, apparently the Kansas Board Member is also a member of our representative, um, at the federal level. So, of course, he was very interested in making the change for, um, his state to, um, stop the equalization of, um, Impact Aid monies. So, I just wanted to mention that because as part of what, um, we had, um, uh, the discussion of Impact Aid, I also wanted to, um, I have a lot of information that needs to be, um, printed for our Board Members on everything from retaining from school safety to, um, security guards to, uh, mental health, um, there's some, also some resolutions, um, sample resolutions on, uh, that we could utilize in our school district, some about strategic planning. Also, one of the sessions that I really enjoyed attending was actually, um, teachers, staff members listening to our children and listening to what they, and really see them. You know, I think we, we get so busy in our, in our, in our careers and our lives that we really forget that, um, the main reason why we're here sometimes and that's to focus back on our children and have that emotional connection with them because that's what a lot of our children need is just to be, um, respected in a way that we can, uh, they will respect us back. You know, we have to generate that respect to them and we will get it back in return. And so there's a, some wonderful breakout sessions that, um, attended and I would really like sent, um, um, some, a lot of our staff to be there. There was so much information on mental health, um, suicide, bullying, preventions and a lot of wonderful ideas of what other school districts, other states are even putting into law. And I think we need to encourage our, our staff, there's a lot of curriculum, um, there, um, Mr. Horasik, that was, that was very, um, technology and up to date and, and, you know, was, is wonderful, the things that they have, um, some of them, and a lot to hear from younger people of our generation that are implementing these change and developing these new curriculums, so, um, I just really would like to, um, encourage maybe more of our staff members to attend. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, um, with the strategic planning, it's a step forward, I'm excited to see, um, the information that we received, that's very, um, you know, we've been talking about and talking about it and it's actually coming into light and it's coming into view and it's coming into a very structured, well-planned idea that we, that has been started, so I just wanted to say thank you and, for the opportunity. And to our staff, I wanna say again, um, thank you for fighting this fight with, um, the Impact Aid, Javanna, Mike, the administration for being there, um, all of you guys, you guys were there, my colleagues here, that were able to make it at times and testifying to our senators and representative in New Mexico. Um, and Mike's right, we're not gonna stop this fight. Um, you know, we need to continue to fight for those dollars that belong to our children and we need to keep that twenty million dollars here in, in our school district, so thank you very much.
Um, thank you very much, I just wanna say that, you know, can you hear me? It's on, okay, that, um, you know, the conference, I believe, was ver- went very well, you know, I did a lot of networking, you know, it's amazing how much information you can get from just sitting down next to another Board Member from another state and just start talking about things that go on within their district and I tell them the things that are going on in our district and pretty soon we have like four or five Board Members, all from different states, just talking and giving ideas to one another and letting us know how, how they work. Um, to me, that, that was very, very informative to be able to do that. Um, the reason why, um, Priscilla brought up Kansas and Alaska is they're the only other two states, there's New Mexico, Kansas and Alaska where the state takes Impact Aid money. All the other states receive a hundred percent of their Impact Aid and all, that's why, you know, our neighboring state, Arizona, you see their big domes built out there, they receive, each one of those schools, Chin Lee, Winter Rock, Gonaldo, they have major domes and, out in the middle of nowhere for their, their gyms, their facilities and that's because they receive a hundred percent of their Impact Aid money. And that's why we wanna continue that fight in order for our students to be able to, um, be able to receive that funding as well and maybe, and that way we'd be able to better educate and provide them quality, even higher quality education than we're doing at this time. But I, I did, um, I guess they, they told us that by April fifteenth, they would have all the information on the sessions that we did attend online, so we would be able to get, um, the information offline on, on the sessions that we attended and they're supposed to have that up April fifteenth, so I'm just kinda waiting so I can pull up some of those things and, um, share them with the rest of the Board. But thank you all for being here tonight and it's good to be here, thank you.
One thing I wanted to mention that was really important that I saw too, it's called Bridging Two Worlds for Native American Families and I, I, I believe we forget that, that as indigenous people, as multicultural, bilingual, you know, even our Hispanic brothers and sisters, you know, living in two worlds, we, you know, we live, we have our native families when we go home, then when we go to school, we have our western world that we have to learn and live in again. So, that was a powerful, um, also breakout session that I, even just the reading alone was, you know, you could pick up a lot and I'm so glad that, you know, our, our, and we don't, really don't realize that, that our children have, that we barely can manage as adults and just imagine how our children feel as young as they are to try to foster two worlds together and bridging those worlds, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I, I don't have anything significant to, to report, but I do want to also speak out and, and give thanks to our staff members that spent a crazy amount of time on the road, uh, in Santa Fe, back and forth and, and, uh, just an incredible amount of time that they, that they spent up there, uh, fighting the fight for this Impact Aid. And, uh, anyways, tremendous sacrifice, uh, to them personally and, and for, for us in the, you know, all of us that have a stake. know, all of us that have a stake in the school district and I really appreciate their, their effort. There were, there was somebody there from the school district every single day of the legislative session, which was what, 60 days this go around? So, two months straight, at least one person was there for two months straight in Santa Fe. It was just an incredible effort and it was good to see everybody pull together.
Yep, that was good. Thank you to all our staff that was up there, our top generals over there. They were pretty much in the trenches, of course, with our superintendent. So, we appreciate our staff very much. We have tremendous staff, awesome staff within the district. I know impact aid is something that the Navajo leaders have been fighting before, when I was a teenager, I used to go to the Eastern Agency Council meetings and leaders back then were talking about impact aid. But I think there was really nobody there to help them how to approach the problem. But I think right now we're on the right track to make sure that we get the monies that is due to school districts like ours that have Native Americans. When we get all those monies, it's gonna be great. We'll all have a dancing party. Just kidding. We go to reports, three notices and communication. Board members, you can read those on your own during your own time. And let's go to new business and new business A. I want to recommend to the board that we disapprove this item. I talked with our attorney, Andy. We discussed this and I think it's best just to vote it down, not approve it. So, don't follow. Chris.
Guys almost heard me swear there. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we drop or that we take no action on item 6A.
Disapprove. We need to vote it down. I think that's Chris's motion, right, to vote it down. Motion's been made by Chris Mortensen, second by Kevin.
Kevin Mitchell, second. Roll call, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, thank you, board members. Let's go down to new business B.
President Long, members of the board, I've talked with you individually about this particular issue. Item B has to do with a lease that we have for land on the north side of Gallup next to the freeway. It used to be where Sunnyside Elementary used to exist. And currently there is a Head Start building and program there that's not run by us, it's an outside entity, but they leased that land from us. Over the last few months, we realized that the lease has expired. In addition to that, we found out that they were not paying us for the past three years. In addition to that, there was tens of thousands of dollars in in-kind services that they had not been providing us. And so we have reached out to find a fair market value in order to lease that property again to them, those individuals. We're also looking at an appraisal or trying to get an appraisal on that property to give you the option if you want to continue to lease it or potentially sell that property so you know the value of the property. And we can talk about that at a later board meeting. But for now, we have a month-to-month lease that gives us, I believe, an 8% return on investment for that value of that property, which is about $1,200 a month. And that would come in every single month. And then if you decide to sell, we'll look for a buyer, whether it's that Head Start or whether it's somebody else, or if you choose to continue to lease the property for fair market value. So, that's what this particular item is for.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Hyatt, are you saying that they'll be paying $1,200 a month?
I think it was 12 or 1250. I'll double check my, or 12, it was somewhere in the middle between 12 and 13. And again, that was based off of fair market value at an 8% return on investment.
May I ask one question first, Mr. Schaaf? Mr. Hyatt, that, so that will go to 1269 a month. What was their lease supposed to be? I know they haven't been paying for however many years, but what were they supposed to be paying? So, I'm just curious what the difference between what they were supposed to be paying and what they will be paying.
It was, they were approximately paying about $100 a month for actual lease payment. In addition to that, they were supposed to be paying about $800 and something dollars in in-kind services, which we have no record that we've ever received. And again, the $100 a month had not been received for three years. And so that is why we're going back out trying to get fair market value and since they haven't been paying, we feel they should give us the fair market value in total, in total lease amount.
I think that makes, I mean, I think that makes a ton of sense. I'd like to give them, you know, every opportunity to, to make right on their, you know, on their commitment and make sure we do right by them, but, you know, fair market is fair market. So, I will second that motion.
One last, one last piece of information. They did, over the three years, they did pay that amount back to us, at least for the $100 per month for three years, and so they have caught up on their payments. The in-kind services, though, we have not received.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
What kind of in-kind services are we looking at or can you define that for me?
I cannot define it, Mrs. Manolito, because it was never defined in the original lease. And so it's just, I just found the language and the language said there was $9,000 a year in in-kind services. We don't know what that meant. It was, it's from 1990, 1994 that we've been leasing that property that we know.
Wow, that's a long time.
One more question.
Go ahead.
How many of their kids from Head Start transitioned into Gallup McKinley County schools? Would we have those numbers?
We don't have them right now, but we could find out just by, simply by finding out what students attended there. We'd probably have to do an IPR to get that information of what students were at that school and then compare it to the data that we have as far as enrollment.
Well, they should be enrolling into our school system. There's no other place for them to go, right? So, we have a motion on new business B, motion was made by Michael Schaaf, second by Chris Mortensen. Roll call, John.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manolito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Thank you, board members. Let's go down to new business C, the audit report. Mike?
President Long, members of the board, this next item is an important item. We go through an audit each year. This audit is for us, for this current year and also included with us is Middle College. Middle College, I don't believe is represented here tonight. I think it's the first audit I've seen them not attend. This audit is for the general audit for the year. This does not include, I'll make sure it's specified, this does not include their special audit for Middle College. Middle College has failed to perform the special audit and follow your corrective action plan. I would assume, as you'll find out in this particular audit, there were four items that we brought up that were financial and they were caught in this audit. I'm sure the other 11 or so items would have been caught in a special audit, but they've refused to, to do that audit. So, again, this is just a general audit that we do each year, does not include the special audit that was required of Middle College.
President Long, members of the board, members in the audience, superintendent. With us this evening is Farley Werner. He is the president and managing shareholder for Henkel and Landers. They are the professionals that we have hired in order to do our annual audit and they should be returning to us this next year as well. We're very pleased with that. As Mr. Werner goes through this, please do remember that they are evaluating us, but we are ultimately responsible for all data and findings that are located within this.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Farley, Farley Werner, I'll just say it, it's very common to go with Werner. But I just wanted to introduce myself and then thank you for having me this evening to present your audit. A little bit of background is that this audit presentation has been reviewed by a member of the board, your superintendent, Ms. Hanks as well. And I can go through a summary of this presentation, I think for the purpose of, of being in the open, discussing it in an open meeting and just being transparent, I think is the purpose of this presentation. It is, the audit report itself is available on the website of the Office of the State Auditor's Office, so it's very easy to find. But with that being said, I'll go ahead and summarize the results of the audit. So, there are certain things, this, this presentation that we have, that the board members and staff have here is, is what we presented at the exit conference. In other words, the meeting we have right before we submit the audit or we call it the draft audit report to the State Auditor's Office for their review. And so all this information has been presented. Certain things I'm gonna try to highlight and not go through all the detail unless someone would like to stop me and say, "I would like you to expand on your presentation." So, there's an agenda page and there are certain auditor's communications that we do communicate with board members as is required by the standards, so we've done that. We talk about the results of the audit and the findings that we did present in the audit report. And then we do have financial trends. I would say that you may not want me to go through those financial trends, but if you, just let me know if you'd like me to. So, I'm turning to page three. This just identifies our audit team, so I was the partner in charge and then we had three other members of our staff do the field work and, and complete the audit. And then moving to page four of this, we just outlined what type of audit do we do? There are so many types of audits with the definition of audit could vary depending on what the scope of work is. So, our job is to determine if the financial statements are materially correct, so board members and all, and everybody actually who reads that report can have confidence that those numbers are, are correct. And there's no, there's no lack of confidence that the numbers maybe are incorrect. So, that's our main goal. We also are required to determine if the internal controls are reasonable, the checks and balances with the way you're maintaining your financial statements. Third bullet point that we note here is that there is a state statute that goes beyond just determining if the material, identifying material weakness in the internal controls and another level of finding which is a significant deficiency. The state statute really wants you to go a little bit deeper and identify any weakness in good accounting practice or violation of law, basically violation of law. So, so there's basically state compliance items that maybe are not material or significant, but the state as a whole would like us to identify those and, and put findings together for that type of smaller item. And so, last thing to note here is we do think about fraud and ask questions about fraud in our audit, but it's not a forensic audit or it's not a special audit. So, we, we ask those questions and we do plan and, and look at our testing to see if we could find any or, or keep in mind if there, any fraud could happen, but it's, it's not that type of audit and it's not, it's just not the same. So, of course, we would let you know if we found any, that would be our, our requirement to discover that and communicate that to you and the Office of the State Auditor's Office. So, anyway, with this report that you now have, the board can feel good about the numbers that they have and management, of course, has it for all their reasons. They have it for grants and many reasons. And of course, as I said earlier, the public can just go and download that audit report on the State Auditor's website. Page five just talks about responsibilities between the auditor and management and it basically, to summarize what this table means, it means that the management has lots of responsibilities and that they do a lot of work. So, they're, because they're required to make sure the accounting policies are designed properly and implemented well and that their checks and balances are, or their internal controls are reasonable, that they are working and they're gonna catch errors or fraud. Not, nothing's guaranteed, but that they're reasonably designed and implemented. And then estimates are made, or there's always estimates on how to allocate people's time or certain times things have to be allocated between different programs, things like that. So, that's, management has to do that. And then at the end of the audit, management gives us a representation letter. And if you saw that letter, you'd see about 75 items on it, a lot of items that basically management signs off on after they read it and they say, "We gave the auditors everything they needed to do the audit properly, so we didn't hold back some crucial piece of evidence or information because the auditors maybe just didn't ask for it quite right." So, that's, that's kind of a really big deal to sign off on that rep letter. And then our job as auditors is to give an opinion on these financials. In our opinion, are they, are they clean, materially correct, or is there something in there that we, we can't, we're not sure that it's materially correct, so we have to modify or qualify our opinion. And it's all based on audit programs and the standards, which is based on reasonable assurance, so we're not looking at every single transaction. So, there's no absolute certainty on everything, but it is reasonable. And the last thing we do is look at the internal controls for many purposes, to plan the audit, how big should our sample sizes be, understanding that the checks and balances are working and in general, just to plan the audit. So, page six of this presentation, it just gives us a conclusion how things went this year. Accounting policies year over year, the way you record things and, and do things in your accounting department are consistent. The only thing I would add is there was a new GASB standard that, that added some unfunded liabilities to your, to your balance sheet. So, next one is how many adjustments, we call them proposed adjustments. That word proposed means we're independent. We don't make adjustments to your books without your understanding of them, making sure that you're comfortable with them, basically your approval of them in most cases. When, at the end of the day, we all expect to agree with them and that's how it happens most of the time. So, there was 39 adjustments and that's because of just the transition, just the presentation, taking your numbers and converting them to the basis that they need to be presented in the audit. So, there's different cash, cash or budget basis versus an approval basis. And then there's just many other adjustments that need to be made, so there's a lot, a lot of things there for, that you can see in this, in this presentation. And then the last questions here are just important things to communicate to the governing board. Were there any disagreements? Was there disagreements between the auditors and management? No. There was no third, like you didn't get, need to get a second opinion on some issue that may have been controversial or not certain. So, all those things were straightforward and there was no significant difficulties in performing the audit. Page seven, a summary of the results. So, we do offer two opinions on the financial statements or on the audit report. One is on the financial statements and it is unmodified, which means it's a clean opinion, it's materially correct, is what we believe. And were there the type of findings? There was no material weakness findings that we identified and presented. We did have some findings that are called significant deficiencies, which is a lower level or lower, it's not as serious as a material weakness. So, we had some findings there and we had no non-compliance findings material to the financials. And we did have some state audit rule, state audit compliance findings that we will present or will summarize on the next pages here. Before that, we do talk about federal awards. So, that's the second opinion that an auditor gives. When you have enough federal funds that you expend in a year, we are required to offer an opinion on whether the school district is expending those funds within the guidelines of, of the federal government. So, we did that. It's an unmodified opinion, so we believe, in other words, that you are spending those monies properly and there was no findings related to the federal funds. And there was no findings related to the federal funds. Next page is nine. It just identifies, well, we did audit several major programs. So in other words, what, what did we audit in the, what federal awards or programs did we audit? And there was a child nutrition cluster, a Title I grant, and a Title II grant. Page 10.
Excuse me. What made you pick these ones?
So we have a very set requirement on how to select our, what they call major programs. So we look at the entire schedule. There's an entire schedule of the expenditures that we actually present in the audit report, and we look at the numbers. And the requirements are that we have coverage of, if you are, there are certain guidelines, but we had to, we had to cover 40% of all your expenditures. And so therefore, we need to also, so that's one guideline. We have to, we have to audit 40% of the total federal fund expenditures. And then we also have to choose grants that have not been audited in the last two years, at least in the last two years, that are over the threshold of $750,000. So those are considered major programs. So that's how we do it.
Thank you.
The, and actually, I got to correct myself. $750,000 is usually the general threshold, but in your case, you do have a lot of federal funds. You're bigger than a lot of organizations in the federal fund department. So your threshold, instead of being $750,000, is $1,000,001. That's what makes, makes a major program. Page 11 is the findings. So we have a table here that identifies, well, what were the findings last year? And what's the status of those findings? Did they repeat or go away? And then we have new findings. So just to summarize that, last year, you had an activity funds finding that has been resolved, in other words, gone away. Employee files finding has been resolved. A, this, let's see, period of availability for special education individuals. So it's a federal finding related to the availability of funds for a special education program that went away. And accounts receivable finding went away. So all your prior year findings went away. So that's good. You had no repeat findings, which is really good. Sometimes there's findings that are stubborn. It's hard to make them go away, but you were successful in that area. And then the current year findings were, the first one is we identified it as segregation duty. So it checks and balance system to ensure that there's reasonable checks and balances. And one of the best checks and balance is a segregation duties. You separate the duties. So we had a comment with there. We had a comment on the vendor master file. So that's just, all your vendors are in a master, they're in a master file, and the controls over that, we thought they could be improved. Controls over payroll, we saw some areas there that could be improved. Next one is control environment and information and communication. And just to clarify on that one, you had, you had a special audit yourself. And so that finding, our job as just your regular auditors, you do the annual audit, is that we are required to put in the findings that came from a special. So some of those findings might look familiar to you, or the titles might look familiar. So that, I know that one is from there. And lack of controls over operations management software, that one's from the special.
Yeah, I was just going to briefly.
Clarify this.
Yeah, so, so we identified an irregularity. I don't know if the board quite remembers this. And we actually self-identified that and went to the state auditor and asked if we could go out and have a special audit. And the state auditor said yes. And so these are those that originated from that request that the district made to the state auditor.
And so, yeah, several of these are. And in fact, I know these last three are. So lack of controls over operation management, that's from the special. Circumvention of procurement and purchase policy from the special. Weakness in the design and implementation of related party policy from the special. All right. Then just identifying, because you have the charter school, which is considered a component unit, there were findings there. So these are the findings that we thought were appropriate to put in your annual audit. You did have a report that was done internally. And just going through that, so executed charter school contract was a comment. Violation of academic calendar requirements. Inaccurate allocation of salary expense between instruction and school administration. Inappropriate travel in unauthorized person. An under collateralized bank statement. I think that was not from the special or from the internal work. So that was, that came from us as your annual auditors. So that, in summary, is your findings. And we have this little column that shows you, well, what type of finding is it? Because we have, there's about seven different types of findings you could have. None of them are material weakness. Some are significant. The letter B is significant. Letter C is other matter, and letter G is a state compliance finding. Any questions in this area?
Excuse me, I have a quick question over here. These, these findings under the component unit section, I mean, it seems like a fairly consistent defense that they had that they're, you know, they're the minor in the, in the contract, and therefore, they're kind of passing the buck on to us, and they believe that they're not findings and stuff like that. Where does it go from here? Like, you know, the audit says it's a finding. They say, "No, it's not a finding." So where's the truth? And who figures out the truth and what happens?
Yeah, well, so the findings, we have these findings in the report, and then there is a response from those, we say, views of responsible officials, which were the charter school officials. I think that's, you're referring to those responses.
Yeah, and every response, they basically say, "No, we don't believe it's a finding." And then they say, "We're the minor in the contract, therefore, it's your fault because you're the, you know, superior in the contract." And so they kind of like kick it right back to us. So like, where do, I mean, what do you, what do you do with that?
So at this point, it is a disagreement. And I believe we do have auditor's rebuttal on those. At the end of the day, and this might be, you know, I might hear from the board members, is that my understanding is that the charter school is, is no longer going to be a charter school of this district. So at that point, what, does it matter anymore?
No, it doesn't matter. I could, I mean, I don't, I don't care. I just am wondering, I mean, if they're, if you're saying they're a finding, and they're saying, "No, it's not a finding," and it doesn't matter anymore, then should it really realistically appear on our audit report?
Well, we're under the responsibility to report items that occurred during the period that were, that are under audit. And we, we thought it was appropriate to put them in. And we did talk to management, and they thought it was appropriate to put it in. And Javanna, I believe you have something to say here.
If I could add one thing before Javanna talks is, this not only was done by a professional auditor approved by the state of New Mexico, but it also passed the state auditor's review also. So this had two professional entities that looked over this audit to verify it. Just want to make sure. Said it was, it was good to go, and it was approved by them to be approved by the state. Javanna?
President Long, members of the board, superintendent, members of the audience. Mr. Verner, this is something that we've discussed with an audit. Findings is kind of your, you need to improve something. And as we are relinquishing that entity from under our control in less than a couple of months, there's nothing that we can do to help them improve in these areas or make them to become compliant. That will become the onus of the state. However, these findings are as they stand. Although, you know, they can, they can say that, you know, we probably, they're, they're basically stating that we should have come in and made the correction. You know, we've kind of been over this many times. There wasn't a good formal agreement in place, and things, things were not running as they appropriately should have. And that was very much identified in many of the conversations that we've had. So they've been identified formally. Is there anything left for us to do as a district? I don't believe so. So yes, it exists as a finding, and it will be their onus to correct these findings. And if they don't, we have one more year that they'll be audited as an entity under us as a component unit. If they're repeated findings, they will be again in the audit. And then they will separate from us and become part of the state audit. As Mr. Verner, ha ha, $5 for me. As he mentioned earlier, many different entities use these for many different things. And that can be whether we go out for a general obligation bond issue, or it could also be renewal of some type of contract. Different entities use this. And so these will follow that entity as long as they stay unresolved.
Thank you, Javanna. My question is, or is kind of similar to what the questions that Mr. Mortensen's asking. But I think what bothers me is that, what he's stating, that they're, they're not going to be held accountable for the children that are in their charter school right now. And those, the parents and the students should be, I wish there were somehow, they would know these kind of, this information, that what, how this charter's being run because they're just dis servicing the kids that are there because they're, the money is not being spent right. There's a lot of findings here that should be. And then now, when they're, they're still under us for a next audit, we heard. You know, and, you know, for them to be a charter school and to receive additional, more funding, to be misused is just horrible. And I think as they're dis servicing our kids that are in that school. That's what bothers me.
So maybe just a little bit of further information on that. The findings are documented. They are in a permanent, basically a permanent record. And one, one question is, well, what's the corrective action plan? And one, one way that I see it is that the district has taken corrective action plan by separating. So, and, and now these findings will, either they'll be resolved in the next year's audit, or maybe they will repeat in the next year's audit. And then at that point, maybe the district will determine, should they, do they have a responsibility to communicate these issues and the concerns to the new governing body of this charter school? So that maybe they are not just going to be swept under the rug. Maybe they will continue to be brought up and need to be corrected. All right, I'll move on to page 12. We just had some, some best practices or things to, that we did not consider, we didn't believe that they were findings. We just brought them up as things to consider or maybe a best, best practice. One was add a business purpose to a travel card approval. And the second one here was ensure POs are amended when estimate change, estimates change. So the example would be an overpayment from a component unit without purchase order reissue. So there's just a minor thing there to, to point out. And then we have our financial trends, which I, I can skip over unless you would love to hear about those numbers compared to prior years. And so those are for your reading, those are for your information that you can read or follow up. If you have any questions, you can call me. And so I'll move past all of that. And that's it. Page 15 was, or page 24 was a wrap-up page. We've wrapped up, I think, we met all those wrap-up reminders. And that's it. I'm open for questions. But of course, before I do that, I should just say thank you to management. We, they, it is just another project, another thing that they have to do to prepare and get their audit done. So we work, we ask for a lot of deliverables, and they have to deliver. So we work hard, but management works very hard. Thank you.
Any other question, board members?
Thank you for your work. We appreciate your work. So Javanna's the best CFO in the state of New Mexico. And, and I did this work for a while professionally, and she's the most professional person I've ever worked with in this, in this capacity. And I appreciate her competence and her transparency and her honesty about every single thing. And I mean that sincerely. Javanna is awesome, and we really, really appreciate her and hope that she never leaves us. Like somebody else, is the truth. So my next question is, how can we help our audit be less expensive for next year?
My understanding is that you always ask that question, to no matter what vendor you're talking to. And I guess my response is, we want to do a quality audit. We want, we, we have new standards, we have new things. We want to make, since you were an auditor, you know how hard it is to document your audits and how hard it is to do a thorough, a good thorough audit. So we're focused on, we did get the, you did vote for us to get the, to let us do your audit, and our job is to make sure we do it well. And I think it's pretty competitive, so I'll just end it with that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
President Long, members of the board. I just want to relay a couple of things before we close up. This is the first time that I remember, or I think any of us can remember, where we didn't have a repeat audit finding in the district. I just want to make sure that's very clear. Also, many of the audit findings for Galway County Schools, not including Middle College. These were due to our own special audit doing, due to an internal investigation that we conducted. We only had one or two audit findings, which you're always going to have some audit findings, and you want them so you can get better. I just really appreciate the work of the auditor and the work of our business department, HR department, and all the people that had to provide documents. It is an extent, it takes a long time to do this. It's not like they come in for a day and do this. It's weeks, months to complete it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Board members?
Mr. Long, I'd like to motion to approve.
Okay, motions been made by Priscilla Manuelito to approve the audit report. Second by Michael Schaaf. Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf? Mr. Mortensen? Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members. Let's go down to New Business B. Mike?
President Long, members of the board. Last time on the agenda this evening is an item that we began, at least the first part of it, we began discussing during, a couple, a year and a half ago, during the strategic planning process regarding rebranding our district. And we are coming to you this eve-